Good evening. Welcome to the March 9th regular meeting of the Rockville Center Board of Education. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Opportunity for students seeing none. Mr. Gavin, Superintendent's update?
Thank you. We've had a busy few weeks since we've last had the opportunity to speak. Last week, I had the opportunity to meet with our local legislators. Trustee Hackett and trustee Farisani represented the board at this meeting. We, as a district, shared our perspective on important issues such as funding for cybersecurity precautions, ideas for local grants to support community schools, and to expand needed field space, and other state and county issues, such as the restrictive requirements of civil service. In attendance was Mayor Murray and Deputy Baxley, and I would say that one of the most important issues that there was agreement across party lines was the proposal on Governor Hochul's budget to mandate that local towns and villages add 3% more housing. State Senator Thomas, New York State Assemblyman Brian Curran, Nassau County legislators Muley and Gaylor were all in agreement, as were both the district and Mayor Murray and Deputy Mayor Baxley. This issue is contentious and problematic for Long Island, particularly for Rockville Center. Despite the fact that our student population numbers have remained relatively stable over the last 30 years, we struggle with space at three of our elementary schools and currently do not have space to add pre-K inside of the district, our pre-K program we currently house in Oceanside at the JCC. We have one of the smallest footprints in Nassau. We are, in short, plan poor. Not only was this topic a conversation at a legislator meeting, but I attended the Spring Conference for New York State Superintendents this past weekend, and it was a topic of conversation there as well. During a presentation to superintendents about New York State's projected budget, the issue was raised several times, and I also had the opportunity to speak with the presenter right after the presentation to highlight the strain that it would put on our local schools in terms of our services. For Rockville Center additional housing, Rockville Center schools additional housing would be a burden on our schools, particularly at Wilson, Ewing, and Culver. Our residents should contact local legislators and the mayor's office to learn more about the negative, about the potential impact to the school district. I also want to remind the board that I have a follow-up meeting with Senator Thomas to reiterate this. I also have a meeting set on the books with Congressman De Esposito. Although he is a United States representative, he's a Long Island native, and this is an issue that he's important, that he feels is important as well. I also want to report that the furniture at the greenhouse was installed. Mr. Van Zandt is happy to say that students are super happy in the rule of selection and the layout, and they are really enjoying their new space. As a follow-up, I just want to follow up to last, last meeting. We had all of our fire alarms tested by the fire marshal, and we also had our PEA systems tested, and we had the new speaker installed at Watson. So I wanted to follow up on that as well. We had a question about Regents' Review, so I'd like Dr. Moriarty to talk about our current policy and practice.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Typically, the schools provide Regents' Review in various ways and formats, and our community ed program provides an extra opportunity for review in the evening. So for this school year, 2022-2003, we offer in-school support for both the high school and middle school learners. Our zero period is utilized for this work as well, and as we move closer to Regents' exams, support periods transition to in-school Regents' Review. And as we continue to move closer yet to Regents' exams, our class time is also utilized for Regents' Review. After-school support will consist of two different models. The district offers free of charge to our learners right after school. So the middle school, this is the TLC from 2:45 to 3:00, and then we're also going to add an additional session for the Regents from 2:45 to 4:45. Each class will meet twice a week, Monday and Wednesdays, or Tuesdays and Thursdays, for a total of 10 sessions. Now, our evening support will continue as usual through the community ed, and this option will require parents to pay $80 for a course, and each course will have 10 sessions. And that will be Monday and Wednesdays, and Tuesdays and Thursdays. So again, we provide a tremendous amount of support during the school day and after the school day, and we are offering three different ways to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Moriarty. I just want to remind the board that last year, without the payment, the district inefficiently was able to schedule, which ended up with some students on virtual instructions that really wanted to be in the class because they were closed out of in-person classes. I also want to remind the board that our guidance social workers work with building administration to make sure that cost is not at all an issue. If anyone raises that as an issue, we make sure that they can attend free of charge. The RVC Ed Foundation Gala is Saturday, April 1st, at 6:30 at Gatsby's. Mr. Peter English will be honored at the Ed Gala for his work developing our high school business program and his work to build up our DECA club. Now, we will talk a little bit more about DECA when it comes to opportunity for superintendent, but they are upstate right now at Rochester, participating and hopefully dominating the The money raised from the gala goes directly to the students here in RVC. We are so appreciative for our partnership with the Ed Foundation and super grateful for the work that they do on behalf of our students, and we encourage any and all people to be a part of the gala because that is their biggest fundraiser. And those dollars go directly into program in the school. I'd now like to turn it over. Ms. Love, can you tell us a little bit about K registration and UPK registration, where we are right now for the board?
So at this time, our UPK registration has closed. We are full, and there's a waitlist that now parents can sign up at this point to hold a seat on the waitlist, where if someone who's currently registered changes their mind, we will contact families who are on the waitlist in order, starting with the first family who signs up. And at this point, we have 101 seats at the JCC in Oceanside. And so both UPK registration and kindergarten registration are all set for next year. Additionally, did...
I was gonna, I was gonna give you an intro, but as way of introduction, Ms. Love, we had some of our parents raise for, to my attention, that we have some inconsistent practice in terms of the way we address food allergy and food, generally speaking, at the elementary schools in different schools. So different schools kind of handle it different ways. We asked that Ms. Love meet with the school nurses to work out something that would be more consistent across the elementary level. Ms. Love, if you please, can you kind of go over some of the different things that you talked about and make some recommendations for our process going forward?
Sure. So the district, we have a policy for food allergens, but it's, how are we utilizing our procedures to fulfill the policy and make sure that our students are safe? So I'm just going to go over our procedures for that. So if a family notifies us that their child has a food allergy, and this could be, people often think of peanuts, but there's peanuts, tree nuts, sesame, wheat, dairy, eggs, all of these things. And later on, I'll speak to why we are not a peanut-free specific school. Most schools are not at this time because at one time it was predominantly peanuts, but now due to sensitivities, children are allergic to so many different types of foods and have anaphylaxis reactions that it's really become about having very safe procedures and being vigilant about that, and with our follow-up, so that we support our policy and make sure our students are safe. So going back to, a parent notifies us that their child has an allergy, we get a health plan from the doctor. So that would be something that the doctor would fill out, explaining what the allergy is and what is the procedure for us to follow. So for some students, for example, it might be take one dose of Benadryl, watch the student for 15 minutes, and perhaps then administer an EpiPen. This is just an example. And the doctor would lay out for us what those procedures would be for each student. That health plan is reviewed. It's reviewed by our nursing staff. If we have any questions about it, our school doctor will also advise us as to any, if there are any unusual or something that we haven't seen before, if we need to be a little bit more creative to make sure that we could support the student, we'll include our school doctor in that as well. We have a team meeting for the students. And then at that point, when school starts, we run a listing for every building through my office with the nurses as far as who are the students, what classes are they in, and what adults will be working with those children. We educate the entire staff in every building on allergy awareness, meaning how do you identify an allergic reaction in a child, whether it be a bee sting or a food allergy, whatever the case may be? How does a child present who might be having an allergic reaction? Because we do know that sometimes when you're having an allergic reaction, you're not able to communicate that. Also, if it's a young child, then they can't identify it in themselves. What are some of the things that we're looking for? So we train all of our staff in that at the building level as part of our teacher orientation or staff orientation when we return to school. Additionally, all staff are trained on the use of epinephrine or an EpiPen, and so that everyone in the building knows how to use an EpiPen, and they're trained by the school nurse. Then if we have a student who's on this list, whose parent has notified us, who we have a health plan for, we then meet with the teachers and the staff who work specifically with that student to go over that student's specific plan, how we're going to support them, and it could be anything from within the classroom, in the lunchroom, are there specific requests that the parent has made for us to make accommodations for a student? So for example, today, one of the nurses was talking to me about a student that has a sesame allergy, and our food company recently switched to a hamburger bun that has traces of sesame, but this student really enjoys our school hamburgers, and it's an elementary student. They were upset at the idea that they couldn't have a hamburger anymore, so we made arrangements for the parent to send in a bun that was safe for the child to have. And so the lunchroom prepares the student's hamburger on the special bun when it's hamburger day. So we really do our best from the sense of making it an inclusive experience for the students who suffer with these allergies, but then also to make sure, of course, that they're safe and go through all of this training with our staff. So these meetings that we have, again, go from the procedures of safety, from what type of medications are we administering to students, that whole protocol from a safety perspective, but then also ensuring that the students have a positive, inclusive experience and that their journey with this food allergy is one that doesn't, that impacts them as little as possible. Then we have ongoing building-wide awareness and precautions if a student during the school year is diagnosed with some type of allergy. Now, they're new to the list, so I just want to point out, so if a student is diagnosed in January, even though we did all of this training in the beginning of the year, we would circle back, look, figure out all the people who work with this child, and again, do an individual team training for any student who is newly diagnosed during the school year. Our procedures are similar to those in other districts. Most schools around us are not peanut-free, and it's, in particular, again, that's in part because there are so many other food allergies as well, but it is important to note that the schools who are, the one or two that are peanut-free, still have, report anaphylactic reactions in students. And so I think there's a piece of it, working with children with allergies, is really the environmental control or the immediate control around the student and checking what they're eating on a regular basis, because you can say a school is peanut-free, but if there's a new caretaker in the home for another child in the class, they could easily bring in something for lunch unbeknownst to the person, not knowing that maybe a school is peanut-free, and there's a false sense that no one in the class has a particular allergen, when in fact, it's difficult to control that. So it's really recommended that you work with staff, that we work with the student and the family to ensure that the child is safe. And then for next year, just in our meeting, we talked a little bit more about alignment as far as parties and food events and things like that. So we are going to continue training our staff, individualized by student need, but we have decided as a team and with Mr. Gavin that next year, there will be no food birthday events in any of the schools. So if it's someone's birthday, they perhaps bring in pencils, or they bring in a goodie bag for the class, but we're going to stay away from food-related birthday events. If there's an event in the school that food will, there'll be food served, that must be served and packaged, with it packaged and labeled with the ingredients on it, so that the teacher can check and see what the ingredients are in that particular product. So let's say it's International Night, and everyone in the fifth grade is bringing something in. It must be packaged, labeled, and reviewed prior to the event so that we can ensure that anyone with a food allergy, that that's all coordinated, and that anyone with a food allergy would be safe. And then proactive practices and ongoing education is really what we are always looking at, new studies and things like that, and working with our partners locally to see what other schools are doing, if there's anything that they're doing that we can adapt, and we do that through our nursing meetings and myself as, you know, when I attend PPS meetings, just to see if there are better practices, of course, we would look to employ them. But at this point, what we're doing is really very much aligned with the districts around us and considered best practice, and also has been reviewed by a school doctor.
The other thing I would add, thank you, Ms. Love, but the other thing I would add was that our nurses really played a key role along with Ms. Love in identifying where we're inconsistent. There are some schools that have not had food for birthday parties for a really long time, and some other schools that have. So I think one of the things we want to do is be aware that when we have students that have significant allergies, the risk is great. And so where we can provide opportunities for common sense steps to minimize those risks, I think the nurses are all in agreement that we should be consistent across the district, and I think Ms. Love did a fantastic job facilitating the discussion, so thank you.
Thank you. And so again, moving forward then for our meeting here about safe schools, we're looking for awareness, training, and proactive practices, ensuring safety, you know, versus an allergen-free school, really educating our staff on how to support our students and work with our parents and maintaining daily precautions. And if anyone has any questions or anyone that might be listening at home, if you have a child with allergies, you could certainly reach out to my office or your school nurse would be happy to help you.
Great. Thank you. So that is allergies as well. Again, thank you to the board and everyone. Before we get on to our next piece, I just again want to make sure everyone understands that the Ed Gala is a very important thing for all of our, all of us, and we would like to make sure that everyone comes with that. And reiterate again that we are about ready to turn into, Madam President, civic readiness piece, so...
I just wanted to follow up on your report, if that's okay, Mr. Gavin.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for following up on the items that were left open from the last meeting. I'm happy to hear that the Greenhouse students have been part of the process in getting their new furniture. I'm really excited to see it when we have the opportunity to do that as a board. I just wanted to piggyback on one of the items that you mentioned in your superintendent's report earlier. The Village of Rockville Center invited us to their meeting on February 28th. They had an informational meeting, and I attended, representing the Board of Education. Since then, this is our first meeting, so I just wanted to report back to the board what was shared by the Village, the mayor, the deputy mayor, and the village trustees at that meeting. They provided a detailed explanation of Governor Hochul's housing compact plan, which is included as part of her proposed budget, as Mr. Gavin stated earlier, and the potential impact that it can have on our village. As Mr. Gavin has shared here, as it relates to our district, potential future enrollment projections was really in terms of how it relates to us as a school district moving forward. Included in the governor's budget is a proposal that all municipalities increase their housing units by 3% every three years. For Rockville Center, this would mean an increase of 504 units in the half-mile radius from the train station. We all know the reality of the lack of available existing space in our district, and we will continue to communicate with the village on this matter. As a resident of the village, I encourage anyone with questions or who would like more information to go to the village website. There you can find a helpful fact sheet, information from the last census, and how to contact the legislators that represent Rockville Center on this matter. Thank you for the village for inviting us to attend. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Gavin.
Thank you. I think we are now ready to call Mr. Murphy out of sequester over there to give us a little bit of information on civic education and the pathway program that New York State has. And I do believe he's trying to signal you for the room. Mr. Murphy, thank you for joining us. Thank you for joining the rest of the crew, and we look forward to your presentation.
Nothing if not subtle, Mr. Gavin. Good evening. So it's appropriate and fitting that this week, in case you didn't know, it is Civic Learning Week, and there is a website, national website, civiclearningweek.org, that is sponsored by dozens of corporate organizations and democratic movements. So we are going to talk about the Seal of Civic Readiness as part of a New York initiative, but I'd like you to consider the fact that that is merely a soapbox, an introduction to what is really more important, why is civic education so important, and why is there an added incentive to do so here and now? So there'll be five major prongs of our brief talk today. What is the Seal of Civic Readiness, and to provide a brief overview. How do the criteria for the seal and earning the seal for our graduates align with what we're going to do? What you'll find is that if we did nothing and just moved forward, over 90% of our graduates would qualify for the seal just having been here. What is the big idea, though, that's forming this? I think I'd like to focus on that because I think that's the bigger issue, because it's about the learning and it's about the kids. Then how our graduates this year will qualify, and then during Phase Two of the rollout, how do we increase enrollment and involvement in this to not just the greater high school, but to the district? The seal is a high school diploma designation, but I think the conversation is a K to 12 one. Civics and civic education is a broad term for the sake of this argument and this presentation. Civics is the study and practice of those skills and that information, which celebrates and informs students about what it is to be in a democratic society, the luxuries that were afforded us in the United States as Americans, to take advantage of those, and the skills and opportunities for them to practice that, to develop a voice, to develop agency, and to realize that they are a part of a community and they are the community. While it is important in terms of history, in terms of social studies, in terms of involvement in government, I am also going to argue that the real reason is because it's healthy. As you walked in through the main lobby, We Belong Week is now underway for our Sources of Strength program. If you deal with the Middle Years program at all, you'll talk a lot about where am I, who am I in this story? Why is it that time and time again, when we ally ourselves with programs, this sense of belonging and community is pervasive? Because kids are healthier and better learners and longtime lifelong members of society when they realize that it is for them, by them, and they develop their own voice to participate. So this is hardly a novel construct, but for the sake of this argument, the New York State definition and application of civic education and civic learning is really broken into two broad spheres, civic information and civic knowledge and civic participation. You could subdivide that into knowledge, meaning the actual information, the understanding of where you are geographically, culturally, historically, artistically, economically, and politically, but also the mindset to think like a civic-minded individual, where am I in this, how can I participate in this, do I have an opinion on this, and how do I know this is true? The second part of that is involving the action steps. Information is great. It's even better when it can be applied to a series of scenarios. Why should I participate in backyard players? Why should I participate in center stage? Why should I help organize the recent election? Why should I register to vote? All of those whys are part of an answer that we received in the climate survey that students are pining for. Why am I learning this? Civic education gives them an answer to that. It asks them to question that in a healthy way, but it also gives them experiences that give them a sense of purpose. It's not just a checklist. It's not just a college resume. It's the health and wellness of the individual and the community. No pressure. So it is true that the Seal of Civic Readiness can be used in a variety of ways for the student. Upon earning a Seal of Civic Readiness, which is, by the way, modeled on another seal, the Seal of Biliteracy, which was implemented five years ago, the Seal of Civic Readiness can be used as what's called a four-plus-one pathway, meaning a student can earn a Regents' diploma by sitting and passing five Regents' exams. That fifth exam can be done alternatively. For instance, with a second math exam as well as algebra, with a second science exam. The problem with that is the fifth exam is U.S. history. So I really wouldn't advocate not taking U.S. history in order to earn the Seal of Civic Learning. It can also be used as a standalone. By the way, the four-plus-one pathway is rarely if ever used. As a matter of fact, as a principle, I've never had to implement it. 99.9% of our students earn the Regents' diploma the traditional way. So it's a greater probability that the Seal of Civic Readiness would be used as a recognition on a diploma and a seal that would be added to the credential to the student upon graduating. In order to earn this, the state has piloted and has now implemented a point system whereby students can earn the diploma. I think, I won't go line by line, but I'm going to provide an overview. It's broadened, it's divided into two specific categories, learning and participation. I think what we do need to spend a little time on is looking at the ways in which you can do it, and the opportunity is to participate in as many ways as possible. As I said, the Civic Readiness Seal can be used as a fifth possibility to add to the list of those that are already available to earn a Regents' diploma. It's in existence. It's nice to have. I think it will become less prevalent than a standalone credential on a high school diploma. But in order to earn the Seal of Civic Readiness, the student needs to accumulate six points on a chart. At least two points have to be under the guise of civic knowledge. At least two points have to be under civic participation. The remaining four can come from any number of choices. Those that are listed above that have an asterisk can be done multiple times. In other words, the student earns four credits in social studies, well, they need that to graduate anyway, so that's one point. Social studies proficiency level is worth one point, so you'd get one for the Global Studies Regents and one for the U.S. History Regents. A research project, and the 11th grade research project qualifies that, is three, and we haven't even done anything differently yet as the student is earning the qualify. So there are other ways to earn, for instance, mastery, earning an 85 or higher on the Global Studies or Regents. So suffice it to say, civic knowledge is earned in the diploma, but my other point of emphasis, I think it's more important for us to ask, how are we disseminating that civic knowledge, and what in the classroom and outside are we teaching students about the democratic process? What is government? How am I participating, and why am I fortunate to be where I am in place, space, and time? Civic participation is, again, a menu, and it's really not discreet. There's a significant amount of overlap between one to the other. When you're thinking about the point total and the projects that they're thinking of, think of scope and scale. In other words, a one-point project is usually something that can do as a standalone, like a research project. I can work by myself. I can do 10 to 15 hours. I can present my findings, and that's worth one point. One and a half point, I might have to do another series of steps, like designate a problem. Where am I looking at in my community? What do I see that's worthy of my interest? Let's research some possible alternatives to that problem, whether it's food shortages, whether it's access to medical care, and to propose a series of solutions, present mine to the Seal of Regents Committee and say why I think this is the best solution. You could take other coursework that lends itself to the skill sets and values that lend themselves to civic readiness, from entrepreneurship to public speaking. That's worth credit. This is not just a high school initiative. It's mentioned here once, but one of the things that we have to start doing is creating that continuum from middle school to high school. The middle school capstone project, which we call the eighth-grade Community Service Project, does qualify. The student would need to present their findings and explain how it relates to civic readiness, but any number of the projects that are assumed. You would be hard sought to find a project that doesn't qualify. It doesn't necessarily have to be with regard to government and politics. It can, it can be an internship, but there are any other myriad ways for the student to engage with the community in a healthy way. By giving to others, I am giving to myself. All seniors who graduate Southside High School, who are passing their coursework by May, get to participate in something called ASSESS. ASSESS during the last three weeks of school is the student's opportunity voluntarily. They can sit in the remaining classes, or they can create their own independent project of their own choosing. It can be academic in nature, it can be an internship, or it can be a service project dedicated to learning about your community and your role in participation. By participating in this ASSESS project, they are not only fulfilling that requirement, they are also earning another point towards civic they are also earning another point towards civic readiness. You can work towards gradations, and then we could work towards a larger thing called a Capstone Project. And think scale. Now we're talking multi-year projects. A student does a Capstone Project because they're passionate about it. Think Eagle Scout. Think Girl Scout Gold Award. This is something that you're doing over multiple years. As an added benefit, yes, it could work toward the SEAL of Civic Readiness, but this is a passion. This is something that you're going to spend significant amount of time. That usually manifests in a product. But suffice it to say, if you look through the permutations of this, there are any number of ways to participate, but the message is clear. It's increase knowledge and information about civics, civic belonging and readiness, and find ways to apply that knowledge to a community or national place of interest. I started to list the things that we do that apply, and I just lost track. There's just too many. From board elections to Veterans Day, it's just, there's not a week that goes by that there aren't engaging activities. I think the secret for us to do now is to start labeling, identifying them, and putting them under an umbrella. This is what civic-mindedness is. So students start to see an umbrella of coherence, which will also occur in the learning. What, I learned U.S. History in seventh and eighth grade. Why am I doing it again in high school? Coherence, depth. So why does this meet all of our expectations? And why is it that we could do this without even doing anything? Because I think if you look at the value systems that the SEAL of Civic Readiness is trying to propagate, there are those that we are instituting, just even before the climate survey. We are pining for more experiential learning. Why am I learning this? Give me a real-world scenario where I can apply it. Why is this so important? This is going to come up in every conversation we have. Reflection is not a generic word. Students have to learn how. We ask them to do it all the time, but they need opportunities to do so, and they need to learn how. It's a deeply rewarding experience, but we need to include that even more. And the community engagement is, in and of itself, the health and wellness as we move out of a post-pandemic world that we're all desperately in need of. So the initial rollout that we're in the middle of here is the first year where we conducted a needs assessment, see where we are, what we do, what applies already to the existing framework. And as I said, most, if not all, of the criteria are already being met, but that doesn't mean that we're just going to sit on our laurels. On March 15th, sorry, I think it's 15th, not the 16th, there'll be an assembly with seniors who will formally be introduced to not only ASSESS, but to the SEAL of Civic Readiness and the ways in which they can participate and earn the SEAL. Immediately after that, the juniors will be introduced to it as part of the application process, as well as their summer plans and looking forward to senior year. Again, I want to reiterate that we're focusing on high school students, but civic learning is not a thing for just high school kids. This is part of a continuum where we need to bridge the gap. The projects that are the coolest is when the high school kids reach out to the younger ones. They're awesome. So by May and June of this year, our seniors will be notified, whether they earn the SEAL or not, and we will start transitioning to our second year of rollout, which will start in September. Well, you're going to have to take my word for it. It really will begin in September.
Go.
Thanks. Thank you. Mr. Gavin? All right. And it'll start earlier in the year. Suffice it to say, by the way, the Eighth Grade Community Service Project has already introduced the SEAL of Civic Readiness as another incentive to complete it, just that it is part of it. We'll make that more full force next year into the eighth graders as well as nine through 11. And again, it may not be doing more. It's doing more deliberately. And when we're doing activities, it's not just service, it's civic-mindedness. This is you becoming a part of. This is where you belong. This is where you develop a voice, an agency. In the new TED Talk Club, develop what you stand for and how you are blessed enough to be in a country where you can voice that. The applications, again, will then be due, and I, for one, think this is a really good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I, too, join your sentiment in the importance of recognizing the importance of civic education and how grateful we are that our district is so well-positioned to meet these requirements. So from our coursework to our extracurricular activities to some of the service projects that our students do, I was thinking of another one as you were speaking, the Love Nana Baby Clothing Drive that we coupled with Homecoming this year was also another example where students took initiative, they worked within the community, and then they supported the members of our community. And they did it with their voice, and they did it their way, and they advocated for themselves, and it was really a wonderful project. So I second all of your sentiments about how important it is to have educated citizens so that they can participate in our systems of government. So I'd be happy to take any questions or comments from the board, Madam President.
Yep. Any comments or questions from board members?
Thank you so much. I agree. I love this. I would hope that we could find a way to integrate students in what we're doing. I know a lot of districts invite not just students to have an opportunity to speak, but actually sit on the dais for portions of the meeting where they can maybe bring items to the table that the students are talking about, what's happening on the student's side that we're missing, that could inform decision-making, whether it be about budget or curriculum or whatever it may be. So I would hope that we could, as a civic organization, be utilized. My question is about the actual SEAL. If you don't do the four-plus-one, can you still qualify for the SEAL?
It acts as a standalone exclusively as well.
That's great. I'm wondering if in the middle school, even though it might not be an official SEAL, if we could come up with some sort of junior version of that to get that sort of something to earn at the middle school level, just as an extra, something to get them in the midst of starting to think about high school.
I don't want to get too ambitious, but actually, I think the SEAL is just, is less important than how we're going to make this our own and celebrate it. I agree.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would activities over the summer, say, a lot of our kids do camp anchor? Would those sorts of things apply?
Not only would they apply, they're sought after. The large majority of those things on the right will occur outside of school, and that's the point.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I don't have any questions. Just thank you for your presentation. It was very informative.
Thanks.
Thank you. The only thing I would say is I think it's a great way that you're bringing history class out of the classroom and out into the world and encouraging students to identify a problem in their community and work towards a solution, right? It's using all the techniques that we learn in class and bringing them out into a practical scenario. I think you said 90% of our students would qualify, but there is still an application process, right? That's what we would want to incentivize, and it's not like an honor society where some honor societies where you qualify, there's still an application process to fill out and identify the point bearing.
Somewhere between the Common App and automatic is the application. Yeah.
It's a big fan.
And much of what they're already doing will be repurposed. We're not adding extra work for students. We are celebrating what they're already doing.
That's correct.
Thank you. It's not just a testament to the reflective nature of our students. It's a testament to the reflective nature of our intentional design of our instructional program. So thank you very much.
We have another presentation here this evening. Mr. Bartels will be leading us through the instructional component of next year's proposed budget. Mr. Bartels?
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Okay, just so, for tonight, we want to go through our budget schedule again, just remind everybody where we are, just again what the total budget's going to be, and then kind of go through the different pieces of the instructional budget and what that entails. Also wanted to revisit the capital budget this time. Last time, we had kind of put up the projects we felt. We added some budget figures this time around and made a couple small modifications. Also want to remind everybody, the copy of the detailed budget is online, and we do have some copies outside. So for the budget schedule, we're right in the middle. March 9th, curriculum and PPS, we're talking about that today. We have one more budget discussion to involve music in the arts and phys ed and athletics at the next budget session. Then we'll have a preliminary budget hearing, which is the last time we'll have a chance to make changes to the budget. That'll be on April 18th. On May 3rd, we have a formal budget hearing, which is a requirement by the state, but we can't make any changes to the budget at that time. Then all culminates on May 16th with the annual election and budget vote. So as a reminder, our budget, planned budget for next year is $136,456,494, which is a 5.74 increase over the current budget. That would require a tax levy increase of about 1.99%, which is under our cap. Our cap this year is 2.21%. Also, that 5.74 is really because of a one-time use of reserves that we're using to fund some capital projects. That's what's pushing the percentage of the budget up. Without that extra money in capital, the budget increase would be about 3.79%. So as I've explained in previous meetings, we have some extra reserves this year that we've built up over the last several years. We're going to use that for capital projects, specifically at the middle school, and I'll talk about that as we get into the discussion. Just a note, there've been a number of surveys going around school districts. It looks like the county average for tax increases this year is going to be about 2.3, 2.4%. So we're at 1.99, so we should be under that average. The tax caps are actually a little higher than that, but what people are planning on actual levying in their communities should average in Nassau County somewhere around So the budget, our instructional budget makes up the great majority of the overall budget. It's $72.8 million. If you combine benefits, which go along with teachers' salaries and so forth, combines to up to about $104 million, which is about 75% of the overall budget. So this is really where we spend the money on the kids. All of our programs from this year will, again, continue. We are not cutting any programs going into next year. We are going to be adding some and also improving quite a few of them. The state requires us to budget in certain codifications, so that's kind of how I'm going through the budget this year. So each of these different areas has to do with a certain coding that the state requires us to do. So in some cases, we have, there's a lot of information in them. In some cases, it's very little. For curriculum development, that includes workshops we do and curriculum writing to improve the curriculum. For supervision of schools, that involves the principals and all the administrative expenses. Supervision of special schools is really our project-grade community ed, summer school programs, so we have different people assigned to run those programs. Research, planning, and evaluation, that's where we look and we evaluate all our programs. We did, for the first time this year, a community survey, so that's something that we go under that particular area, as well as Dr. Moriarty, who does that as part of her job. Staff development is all of our in-service and training that we do. We bring staff in throughout the year, do different training sessions on them, and all that's attributed to staff development. Classroom instruction is really where most of the money is spent. That's all of our regular instructional codes. It involves classroom teachers. It involves supplies, textbooks, everything that goes into the classroom, different materials and supplies that they need. We also have students with disabilities instruction. That's for our special education services, includes our special ed teachers, students that go to Bosie's programs and other out-of-district programs. We have occupational education, which are students, really students who would like other opportunities that we can't provide, and they take advantage of some of our Bosie's programs, things like carpentry, cosmetology, animal care, auto repair, those types of programs. We have a code for special schools instruction, which is really the supplies, materials, and the staffing for summer school, community ed, ACE, and project grant, project grade. Then we move to library services. So typical library services we have are the librarians, the books. It's also where we have some research and reference software, and also provides the supplies for stellar program. We have a television services code. This is for the high school and the middle school TV studios that we run. Computer technology services. This is for all the computers in the districts, the Chromebooks, smart boards, TVs, all of our tech support. That all comes on the computer technology. Attendance is really just a code for a piece of our attendance staff in the secondary schools. Guidance services are all of our counselors. Covers Naviance, covers the college fair. Health services include all of our nurses and our medical services. Psychology and social work services, I think self-explanatory. Pupil personnel is really just a piece of Miss Love's salary for coding purposes. Co-curricular activity is where we have all of our intramural activities, our clubs, our chaperones are all covered in those codes. Under interscholastic athletics, we have middle school and high school sports. That covers coaches, athletic supplies, transportation, rental fees, and referee costs. So the changes we have in store for next year, some of our significant changes, and I want to refer everybody to presentations we've made in the past, especially Mr. Gavin's presentation a few meetings ago, where he went in-depth over some of our instructional program changes for next year. But one of the things, as I mentioned, the community survey, we did that this past year. We are planning on doing that again next year, so we've added that to our budget. We have a number of curriculum development initiatives. Keys to Literacy, which is how we teach literacy to all our students. We have a review of the middle school curriculum for math and science. We are continuing to develop curriculum K to 12 for Makerspace Coding and Robotics. I'm trying to kind of do a K to 12 streamlining of all those so they're all integrated. And we also have some new courses at the high school and the middle school for coding and robotics. We are looking to do some innovative furniture at each of our buildings, so we've added an allocation of $15,000 for each building to look for different seating and configuration options. We are continuing to look for ways to make learning more comfortable for our students. Again, supplies and equipment for robotics, additional funding there. One thing, if anybody is going through the detail, there was a lump sum put into the budget last year for special education teachers for the ICT program for the elementary school. It was like one line of $1.2 million. So that line is being modified this year. So that was put into one specific line instead of breaking it up into all the different categories. So this year, we've taken that number. We've broken up the individual salaries into the buildings where they're specifically assigned, and a number of those pieces go for health insurance, FICA, social security, teachers' retirement system expenses. So it looks like there's a big reduction in our special ed budget for next year, but there's really not. It's really just a reallocation of where that budget went. We also have tuitions. Our Bosie's tuitions are down for next year. Each year, Miss Love and her staff go through and does evaluations of students to see if students still belong in Bosie's, can we bring them back to school? And there are some that are graduating from the Bosie's programs. Occupational education, our program in those, as I mentioned, like programs at Bosie's for nursing, automotive services, has increased over the past several years. We used to have maybe 20 students or so. We're now up to 30, 32 students that take advantage of those programs each year. As you heard Dr. Moriarty speak earlier, funding for Regents Review. As you heard Dr. Moriarty speak earlier, funding for Regents Review. We had covered some of those costs this past year with COVID funding, so that funding is ending. So along Regents Review and some of our other programs that we've had, we have to cover those within the regular budget. So we have added an allocation there to assist in covering some of those costs. Instructional software, we're running a number of different programs. Delta Math and Castle Learning, which provided academic support and assessments. Acadians, also for math and science assessments. Kidoyo, which is coding program, and I believe that's K to 12? Does that run through, really K to 12? And Mystery Science, we'll be implementing a new program for elementary science for next year. Cybersecurity is something we talked about at the last presentation, that was under our administrative codes. We also have within the instructional codes additional software to assist with our cybersecurity in those areas as well. Technology upgrades, under our technology, computer technology codes, we have replacement programs for all of our different technology in the district. So we had computers, we had iPads, we have Chromebooks. Continuing to modify and upgrade, as we used to have smart boards, now we have smart TVs. Everything's purchased on a rolling basis, so every five years or so, things kind of get updated and swapped out, and we continue to do that each year. So each year, we have an ongoing upgrade of all the technology in the district. Some of the new things we have in there, we have some switch replacements, which we're required to do. We also have 3D printers and etchers that we have added in there for next year. So that's some, some new technology we'll be adding for our students. More in the instructional budget, and I know Dr. Moriarty already has been working with all of the administration and teaching staff to update our curriculum, and it's been a very time-consuming task, I know. But again, program changes in eighth grade for the math and science option. And again, Mr. Gavin had gone into detail on it at a previous meeting. Coding, K to 12. And Ms. Love also has been working with the secondary schools on integrating, integrated co-teaching at the secondary level. So we implemented that this year. It's going wonderfully, and we're going to make a number of changes at the secondary level as well. And also as part of that, we're also updating our social skills programs for the high school core program, special ed students in the high school. For staffing, all of our staffing is moving forward, we're not cutting any staff. If we have any loss of staff for next year, it'll be due to attrition or not needing them. I think right now, we're projecting to be down three or four sections at the elementary level for next year. So any changes in staffing, we're not planning on cutting any programs, it would just be due to changes in enrollment. Any additional staffing that we have would be covered also through those changes in enrollment. So we're not adding any additional costs for staffing. So with that being said, we do have one new coding teacher at the high school to assist in, in those, those areas. We have a social worker now, we've put in the budget. Again, this is one of those programs that was covered through COVID funding over the last couple of years. We are now moving that into the general fund budget. Also, being covered through COVID funding was a nurse, a psychologist, and some of our before and after-school programs. So all those different pieces are now going to be covered within the general budget, so we don't lose any of the services that that has provided. We're still concerned about learning loss for all of our students, and we're going to continue to provide those programs and those, and provide those supports. Our DECA program, which is our business program in the high school, has garnered tremendous interest in the last couple of years. With all that interest, need to provide some additional funding to keep them going and make sure they have access to all they need to continue with those programs. Athletics, athletics is within the instructional budget. I will be talking a little bit more about that at the next meeting, but I wanted to update people since this is the educational, the instructional budget. We have six teams that we're planning on adding for next year. That would be boys JV volleyball at the high school, also boys volleyball at the middle school, and boys winter track at the middle school. In addition, we'll have girls winter track at the middle school, and also at the middle school for girls, cheerleading in the fall and cheerleading in the winter. So those would be the six new teams we'd be adding for next year. We have had an increase in our football and lacrosse programs. We needed some expanded space, so we're remodeling basement locker room. We need to add about 30 lockers to cover all of the additional students that will be participating in those programs. Again, with the additional increase in, in programs, we also need some new equipment for football, so there's additional allocation for that. So that's why you'll see some increases in those particular budget items. Back to our capital, most of these we presented last time. So at Covert, we have classroom lighting and upgrades for five rooms, as well as the gym, and also refinishing floors in five rooms. That's for a total of 40,000 for Covert. At Hewitt, we have, we're going to continue with the drop ceilings that we've been doing in the hallways. We plan to do them on the first and second floor hallways on the Hempstead Avenue side. We're looking to repair three classroom floors. For the last presentation, I had five down. We actually did repair a couple over the last few weeks due to water damage, and that was covered through our insurance. So fortunately, we won't have to do those. Also have some window shade and screen replacements within the building for a total of about 60,000 for Hewitt. At Riverside, we're looking to paint a couple of classrooms, also the hallway ceiling outside the gym. We want to do some more upgrades. We started last summer with a number of upgrades in the basement. We want to try to tackle that professional development center, flooring, ceiling, and lighting. I think also in the hallway in the basement to make the tile look nice all the way through that basement. I think we did some pieces and left some undone, so we want to kind of hit that whole area. Look to upgrade the exterior lighting for some more safety. And we've been doing epoxy flooring in a number of bathrooms. It's coming out great, so they're looking for a little bit more of that. They're also looking for that on some of the walls in a couple of the bathrooms. So that's looking at about 70,000 for Riverside overall. Watson, we're looking to replace the flooring and light, and have some lighting replacements in the fourth, fifth grade wing. They're also looking for some exterior lighting, and we need to do some mason repair on the clock tower in the front. So that's budgeted for about 65,000. We did remove, I did have up here at the last time, a PA system. We did take a good look at that. We don't need to replace the whole PA system. As Mr. Gavin mentioned, we did replace, we did add a, one speaker to assist there, but we don't need to upgrade the whole system. Even to upgrade the whole system would be a fairly expensive item, because we have to run a lot more wires throughout the building. So we're looking at 65,000 or so for Watson. Wilson, we had made some changes this past summer to the main office. Do a little bit more and do some more cleanup in those, those areas. They're looking for ceiling and lighting upgrades in six classrooms, a renovation of the library space, sanding and refinishing of a couple of classroom floors, and to upgrade the faculty bathroom. So that runs about 40, 60, 75,000 for Wilson. The middle school is where we're going to be spending quite a bit of our time next summer. The major project we have is to, actually the biggest one is really replacing the main roof. That's the one we've had a number of problems, ongoing issues with leaking and so forth at the middle school. So we have 1.7 million in to replace the entire main roof and a couple of the side roofs. We're also looking to replace the main field with turf. We've tried to do some renovations to that field in the past, tried to add additional drainage, has not worked. So we're going to completely redo that field. Part of that review would also be to replace the fencing along Lakeview and a small portion along Burdist to kind of go around the track to make it look aesthetically a little nicer. That's going to run about 2 million. And those are really the two projects that we added the extra money in the budget for. Again, the reason the budget's up, and again, we're paying for that with reserves that we've built up over the last couple of years. So we're not looking to go to the taxpayers for that money, that's coming from reserves. Looking to add three bottle filling stations at the middle school, replace bathroom partitions in the girls locker room, ceiling and flooring repairs in some classrooms. There's a waistline that needs to be replaced. We need to finish the ceiling under the balcony in the auditorium. We did a number of repairs in the auditorium last summer. This was one piece that we didn't get to, so we want to finish that off this summer. And we're also looking for a new sign for the corner of Lakeview and Burdist. You had an old sign which we've taken down, but we want to put something up that looks a little bit nicer, bring it, bring it up to current. And then we have one holdover from this current budget, the elevator repair. That's something that requires a long period of time to take the elevator out of service. We really can't do that during the year. We ran out of time to do that last summer, couldn't get everything in place. We did do all the ordering, we have all the equipment materials stored at this point. They're all ready to go, so as soon as school is out, we're going to have our contractors scheduled to come in and get started right away. At the high school, we're going to do a sidewalk along the student parking area. We've had a number of concerns with students walking through the parking lot constantly. There's student, new student drivers, and I wanted to provide a little safer condition, so we're going to provide walkway along the side, so students don't have to walk down the middle of the parking lot, they can walk down the sides to access their cars. We've had a skylight in the main stairwell here in the high school, which has continued to be a leaking problem. We replaced it a number of years back, continues to leak. We're looking to just replace it completely and seal off the roof. It really doesn't provide much light coming in, and the problems are just not worth keeping it there. They're looking to paint the offices in the main wing, along with some furniture replacements. As I mentioned, the basement locker room, we need some more lockers, some classroom and ceiling repairs. They're also looking for epoxy flooring for bathrooms. Two holdover projects here at the high school, again, same elevator repair here at the high school, doing the same thing, we're all ready to go. And to repaint the track. They need to take the track out of commission for a week or so, there's really no time during the year to do that, it's used constantly, so we'll be doing that as soon as school ends this year. So again, they're all ready to go, they have the materials, we're, we're on schedule, ready to do that. Greenhouse, we didn't have this in the last time. Students, again, as was mentioned earlier, got some additional furniture, they loved it. We're looking to continue some upgrades to the greenhouse for next year. Administration building, we're looking to epoxy the bathroom floors also, works out really well. We also have an allowance for abatement. So each year when we do these projects, ceilings, floors, we run into areas where we may need to do some small abatements, so we have an allowance in there. And that adds up to the total we have in our budget this year of 4.3 million for our transfer to capital to cover our capital increases.
Is that it?
That's it.
That's it?
That's it for now?
Are you sure?
I think.
I like how you went from the fields right to just water filling, water stations. So I thought that was a nice little segue there. Thank you, Mr. Bartels, for a comprehensive overview of the instructional component of our budget. We've done a lot of work planning for this budget. We've been building it over time to reflect the needs of the community in terms of capital, but also to support different instructional changes that we went over earlier in February. Needed instructional changes across the district at the elementary, middle, and high school level. I'd be happy to turn it over to the board for any questions and comments.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from board members?
Sure. Yep, I'll go. Clearly, this is, as you said, the bread and butter, right? Teaching and learning, the instructional budget. In terms of the ICT lump sum transfer that you mentioned, so we want to make sure that anyone looking at that notices that the ICT program, if anything, is expanding, not contracting.
Correct, yeah. So it looks like there's one line of 1.2 million dollars that's kind of dropped way down to almost nothing. Where did that money go? That's why I wanted to make that clear and explain that a little bit. But yes, we're not cutting any programs, we are in fact increasing and improving our programs.
Okay, as it rolls up to the secondary level, which was part of our, our plan there. It's a lot of investment in STEM, right? Making a real 21st century learning environment for our students in coding, robotics. I know Dr. Moriarty's not forgetting about the humanities. You are for this year, looking at the ELA curriculum, and so we look forward to hearing more about that as those plans develop. It's an ambitious schedule at the, at the middle school for the summertime. Obviously, some of it will be outsourced in terms of a roofing company, the turf company, will it be our staff that installs the elevators?
No.
Okay, that's external?
All, all those programs that I mentioned are being done by outside staff, outside contractors. Some of the painting we'll do in-house, some of the smaller upgrades, the lighting, we may do in-house, but for the major, majority of those projects that I mentioned, they'll be done by outside contractors.
And we're confident they can meet the timeline so that our building has a roof and our, our students have an elevator?
We just had a, we just met with the contractors last week. We talked about how we can work on a schedule to make sure that we meet those deadlines. I've worked, I haven't worked with the roofer, Mr. Bartels has, and assures me that they are someone that comes in on budget and on time. I have worked with LanTech, which is one of the company, which will be the company that does the field. LanTech also, very accessible, they come in on time and on budget. So everyone, we communicated to, to the, to the contractors that it was extraordinarily important to the district to be able to deliver both, because we don't have an option for another field, and we can't open in the fall and not have middle school sports, and obviously we cannot open without a roof. So, you know, that, that is extraordinarily important. The roofing work will take up to eight weeks. We anticipated that it up, that it will take up to eight weeks. They will stage it, so that they make sure that, you know, they're covering. You know, one of the questions we asked was to make sure, you know, when we rip off a roof, what are we doing in case we have a thunderstorm? What's the, you know, how do you account for those things, so we don't have floods going throughout the building depending on what the roof is ripped off? And they have worked before to make sure that when they rip, they are ready to cover, so that they're rip and replace, rip and replace, and they move along. So it's not like they just rip off the whole roof and then kind of build it back, they're doing it section by section, in a way that's manageable. The work will take place predominantly between 7:30 and 3:00. That is because the heat on that roof is tremendously, it is tremendously hot for the workers on that roof, so we, we're starting around 7:30 and going to about 3:30, because once you get into that middle of that afternoon, the conditions really don't work well for the, for the, for the workers up there. So we just, we will make sure that we get to all of our neighbors, because the middle school will be under significant construction. And so we want to make sure we get to the neighbors around the middle school and in the Lakeview, Lakeview and Burdist areas to let them know what's coming, and make sure that they are aware that we're going to do our best to be good neighbors as we upgrade our facilities.
Thank you. The last question I had was on the cybersecurity. You mentioned some of it is in this instructional piece and some of it is in the administrative piece. Is that because of student Chromebooks? We want to make sure everyone has coverage?
Exactly.
And that no one can infiltrate our systems?
Exactly. And again, it has to do with, as I said, some of the coding requirements from the state, so we want to make sure things are coded appropriately. So some portion goes into the administrative, some portion goes into the instructional.
Right, and data protection is so important, especially with the school and children.
It's a part of a comprehensive package, yep.
Yeah, we're continually making upgrades with our security at Mr. Gavin's meeting with our technology director every week, going over different plans, any different improvements that we have. So it's an ongoing, ongoing commitment that we have to maintain that security.
It's an issue that, you know, I know this district has faced, and my previous district we have faced as well. It's not anyone that we wish to repeat. I'm sure everyone that follows the story of what happened in Suffolk County, the, the cost first, the interruption of service and the compromise, the compromised data, all three major problems when you have a cybersecurity incident. This is a never-moving target, so we're always constantly trying to make sure that our systems are aligned with what are the most current methods of attack out there. It's one of those things that we don't talk about publicly, because they don't- It's one of those things that we don't talk about publicly, because they do not recommend, cybersecurity experts do not recommend, that you go out there and say, "We use X software" or "We use Y software," because there are, you know, we don't want to advertise what we use so that we could advertise what went around it. We do have insurance, cybersecurity insurance. That was one of the reasons that they felt Suffolk County was attacked, so that it's also important to make sure that the public knows that we have insurance in the case of those things.
Thank you.
Thanks for adding the listing of the pricing for the capital projects we had asked for the last time. Normally, we talk about what happens when the budget doesn't pass and how the capital projects are impacted, but because we're moving money from the reserves this year for the field and the roof, I think the public should understand what happens to those projects if the budget doesn't pass. Those projects would still move on because they're still being transferred from reserves.
Right, they would, because they're not coming from any monies that we're raising. They're coming from reserves, especially the roof, which was considered, we would consider an emergency project, because that's continuing to leak, and we just need to make sure we get that taken care of once and for all. We've tried other, as you know, other repairs, just not working. We have to hit that roof.
Right, perfect. I think that we just need to explain that, because we've not typically used reserves for capital projects, so everything else that's listed here, except those two projects, would be impacted if the budget were not to pass.
They would be, because we can't add any additional funding into the budget for capital projects, correct?
Thank you.
In terms of the construction, I know we really have never discussed the process, just so maybe people could be aware. For the various contractors that we've selected, what does that process look like? Was there bidding? How did you determine who was going to fulfill all of these new construction processes? The roof, the field?
Well, the two big ones, the roof and the field, we went out for, with our architects through a formal bidding process to get the best pricing. We go with the lowest responsible bidder, so we go, we do our due diligence, we check the references to make sure we're comfortable with these contractors. They've done work, both of them have done work for us before, and we've been very happy with them, so no reason not to accept them. But we do go through that entire process of getting bids and quotes and making sure we can, we can get everything done within the appropriate timeframe.
Thank you.
I had a few questions about some of the line items in the budget with regards to curriculum and instruction. I'm noticing that with conferences and workshops, consultants, curriculum development, and in-service training, we're seeing about a $200,000 increase in the budget. I was wondering if we could talk a little bit about what that entails and what we're going to see from that increase.
Okay. Nicole?
Yes, thank you for that question. So we're approaching everything for all of our board goals, and we're providing our conferences and workshops in order to be able to educate our staff, to learn and grow together, and to be able to deliver the best possible educational experience for our students. So when we look at our MTSS goal, we will be looking at progress monitoring tools to be able to assess where our learners are and how they progress toward meeting their goals. We will need training on that. We will need to choose a progress monitoring tool that's norm-referenced and also meets the clearinghouse expectations as to what is effective progress monitoring tools. We also want to increase and enhance our core instruction, because as, remember when I spoke about our MTSS model, we really want to make sure our tier-one core instruction is really solid, and it is based on science and research-based literacy and mathematical practices. So we want to make sure we're aligned to the five pillars of literacy, and one of those areas that we really need to think about and look at is our building background knowledge and our comprehension and our vocabulary development. So we're turning to a research-based program called Keys to Literacy, the Comprehension Routine, and with that comes extensive training for all of our staff members as well. We will, it will be a slow roll, but we have to begin, you know, someplace. So right now, our reading teachers are in-
That's elementary, just to clarify.
It's elementary K-5. However, it is a 4 through 12 program as well, right? So when we're thinking about curriculum in general, we want to think about how we're going to have alignment and cohesion, not just in like our North Star, like the IB learner profile, but also our skills and strategies that we are employing and implementing on a daily basis. We want to lower that cognitive load so that when students are learning a new content, a new part of a subject matter, the literacy part, the metacognition around that becomes easier, because we're using the same kind of mind maps, we're using the same kind of note-taking, we're using the same kind of scope and sequence, going from mind maps, note-taking, summarization, and student question generation, right? So those are all things that we are currently learning, but we will continue to learn. And then there's other elements of that too, such as vocabulary instruction, and the best way to engage in vocabulary instruction, not the way in which we engaged in it, where we were given lists and then we were asked to define them, and then it kind of was in one ear and out the other ear. We really want to make it sticky, so we really need to look at those research-based practices. And we're partnering with the Keys to Literacy in order to be able to do that, so they'll continue helping us with our workshops and our learning. We also want to make data-informed instructional decisions, and we want to be able to have reinforcement and enrichment occurring at the same time in our classrooms, especially since we're really moving toward a truly inclusive environment through the co-teaching model. So we're turning to apps and websites such as, or learning situations such as Delta Math, Castle Learning, iXL, and really making that available for a wide range of learners, not just one teacher having it, but all teachers on a grade level, and then thinking about that alignment, again, and that cohesion. So that all adds to our budget as well. We also want to think about our current curriculum review that we're engaging in for ELA. So again, we need to think about supporting our teachers in thinking about how they're delivering that systematic and explicit instruction around literacy all throughout the day. So our training will encompass that, as well as encompass approaches to learning, which occurs with discussion protocols and other research-based strategies. So these are things that we are currently doing. I don't want to say that we're not doing these things. What we want to do is make sure that there's scale and that there's an equitable learning experience for all of our learners. So regardless of what teacher they have, this is what's happening in all of our classrooms.
So we're building on the work that we started this year with like smaller cohorts and expanding it out?
Absolutely, and this is all based on the foundation that has already been here at Rockville Center. We have a very longstanding tradition of excellence. It is evident when I'm working with the teachers, when we have our facilitators come work with our teachers, they really are brilliant, and it is fascinating to work with them and to listen to their brains think. And when they get into a room together, the things that they're able to do and come up with is just wonderful. We would also like to continue our work with transformational leadership. We started it this year, we would like to continue it as I'm working with the reading teachers and our math implementation coaches. They're referencing the work that we're doing with our, with our transformational leadership coach, and it's fascinating to watch them work with their colleagues and be able to then take their learning of the Keys to Literacy or mathematical principles that we're learning and be able to turnkey it real-time in classes with their fellow colleagues. It's the best learning that we could. So building upon our, like, we want to continue to build on our capacity that has already been here, continue building that teacher capacity, and then what will happen is, we will have, in turn, increased teachers' self-efficacy, and that is the number-one indicator of a child's success in a classroom, is the teacher's belief that they have the power and the ability and the capability to work with their children regardless of where they are, whatever their starting point is, and to move them along their learning progression. So it's an investment in our future.
Good one. I was going to say, a lot of this stuff will also be covered, a lot of the things that Dr. Moriarty is talking about. As we get through, you know, we still have our goals that we're going to report back on in future meetings this spring, including the ELA curriculum recommendations, where we'll talk about some of the things that you're hearing Dr. Moriarty talk about. MTSS is also, Dr. Moriarty and Ms. Love will come back and tell us, as they start at the beginning of the year, what their recommendations are. So we're building a budget around what we believe those recommendations will be to the Board of Education as part of our work towards schools.
Okay, thanks. I also was wondering about the line items for academic support. I'm noticing at Hewitt, we're seeing a $200,000 increase there, and then about $100,000 across the other four schools. And in addition to the academic support in math across the five elementaries, it looks like there's about a $240,000 increase. So I know last year, we hired more academic support teachers, and I kind of thought that was the end of that piece. So I'm just curious what this, this academic support is covering.
Yeah, this is, there are no more new teachers, so this is just either reallocation of the staffing where it is. Some of it is probably, as I mentioned, some staff were covered through COVID funding over the last couple of years, so they're now back into the general fund budget. We have to include those. That may just be where that is.
Social worker.
Social worker, but this is particular academic support.
Right.
So they wouldn't be in these areas. So I'd have to look at the specific codes just to double-check. But it could have to do with staffing moving, you know, we've had some retirements, some replacements over the past year, so it could have something to do with that. I'd have to look into each of the individual codes, but there's really no new staffing for any one building that's built in there.
Okay, and then with, continuing with math, I know last year at the middle school, we had all of our algebra classes co-taught. Is that continuing next year? Yes. I'm just curious, because we're adding the grade-level math class, why there's a reason to continue doing that?
I think we're going to look at what the results for this year. We're cautiously optimistic based on what the algebra teachers have told us and the middle school teachers have told us about the success of the model, and if it's something that we feel is very important to support our students in algebra, that's what we'll continue.
It just seems if we're offering a regular-level math class, then we should have an appropriate option for everyone without having to double-spend on a math class, but I'll be interested to see that data. It just seems kind of like, without having the class, I understand why we would do that, but now that we have a normal, regular eighth-grade class, just questioning that. I was also curious about the furniture. I think it's great that we're adding that into the budget line. We certainly could use flexible seating in many of our classrooms, especially our primary classrooms. I'm just wondering how we're going to support teachers in using that furniture, like if it's going to be, you get a table, or are we doing entire classrooms? Are we focusing on larger learning spaces? What's the rollout for that?
I think each of the buildings, we work with the building principals on identifying the best use of that money and the best space for that money, and I think it depends. Do we, I don't think we have any larger spaces that we're doing as a result of this, but we may have-
Yes.
Wilson Library, are we doing something with Wilson Library?
Well, right now, for the flexible seating, to really help also with the co-teach model, right? So with the flexible seating, then it allows us to teach in small groups, do parallel teaching, and have more free-flowing up ideas and moving the students around the room much easier. So what we're looking at right now, working with the building principals, all five principals, is to furnish one room per school, so they can see what that looks like, they can get experience with it, we can use it as a model classroom, and then after that, think about how we're going to continue updating and renovating the rooms and to have these modern learning environments and spaces, so our learners can, again, optimize their learning. An investment now for an investment in the future.
I think what we're trying to do is build, build a few classrooms where other teachers can see how the space works, and then work collaboratively with the teachers and the building principals to make sure that the space that we, the furniture that we buy is optimized for the room that we put it in, to make sure that that then becomes a showcase so that others teachers can see, get interested in it. And this will be part of what we plan on as a furniture replacement process. This is the first year, it's like seed money towards that. We do have, in most of our elementaries, I won't even talk about high school and middle school, but most of our elementaries, we have old-fashioned desks and tables. So one of the things we have to take a look at is some of these things are older now, and as part of the normal replacement process, just like we talked about with technology, so that we build it into our budget cycle, it's something that we do, and that over time, all of our furniture is refreshed. Did I miss something, Nicole?
I would just- I would just add that too, as we're working with our co-teaching teams and we're talking about the children in the classrooms and what their learning styles are, when it comes up as part of the teacher professional development, when we're working with them, we might say perhaps with this group of three students, you might like to work with them in this way, and that's an opportunity which we've been doing through the special ed fund, special ed budget this year, is to buy pieces of furniture one at a time for each team and let them use it, and then they observe each other utilizing and setting up their classroom space so that it becomes like a viral experience, and we watch each other utilizing one piece at a time. So where we may do one classroom, we are also, when we can, infusing pieces here and there, and then using it as part of our professional development to work with teachers on differentiation and working with students in small groups or individual instruction and things like that. So over time, rather than buying the standard old desk, when it's time to purchase new furniture, we can buy pieces like this, it helps to, you know, it's comfortable for the kids, it's engaging for the kids, but it's also part of our professional development plan to help the teachers learn how to use this, use it to differentiate for students, which is a major goal that we have right now. In terms of the flexible seating, is it similar to, I'm trying to envision what it is, thinking with, I hate to say it, a COVID lens from when we had to take all the furniture that we had that were shared desks and bring old desks back to get individual seating so we could separate people? Hopefully, we never have to do that again, but is this seating-
From your lips, that's right.
Right, exactly. Is this seating like the seating, say, in the middle school library, where the desk is attached, the chairs move, so they can collaborate, but then if we did need, God forbid, to do that again, we could still separate these desks?
Right, yes.
It's not furniture, that's shared seating.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, and it's colorful, it's comfortable, the kids love it, and it allows for, like, when we're observing a lesson, we'd like to see some large group, some small group, some individual, and it allows for the teacher, lesson by lesson even, to break the kids up that way. And then we also work with the teachers on transitions. So if you're transitioning from one piece to another, and we're watching, we're looking at a lesson, you don't want to see any time lost to transitions. If you add it up at the end of the lesson, it's a 40-minute lesson, you would, you'd like to see transitions happen in 15 seconds or less, and when the kids really get used to that, moving from one location to another, they can maximize all of this with no time lost to learning. So it's all part of the bigger plan, and it's very helpful in our work with the teachers on differentiated instruction.
And then I just have one more thing to add, as far as the larger space. Here at the high school, we're looking at the Tannenberg Lab to make it look more like it would be a business experience, and then Dr. Walsh is also looking at maybe something for the, for our learners, so when they come into the building, they have a place for them to feel like they belong and that, you know, it's their space, so.
The Wilson Library, one of the things that we are thinking about doing is changing some of the bookshelves. Right now, it feels like a very closed-off in the Wilson Library. That's one of the things we're doing, is trying to look at the shelving in terms of how do we open it up a little bit more and accommodate more of a makerspace approach.
Thank you. Thank you. I very much appreciate the fact that you want to notify our neighbors around the middle school at the time of our construction. I would also like to ask that we are thoughtful and intentional about notifying our entire community, because it's not just the neighbors that use the both tracks, as Mr. Bartels said. I'm hard-pressed to think of a time that this track here isn't being used as well as the middle school anytime you drive by. So it's just an important piece. I also want to thank my fellow board members for touring the buildings. I think it's a really important process that we started a few years back at the mid-year point, when we are thinking about forming our capital budget and the capital needs in each building. And I would like to thank our principals and our head custodians as well as members of district office, Mr. Gavin, for joining us on those site visits. It brings important information back to the board and administration as we're preparing our proposed budget, so thank you very much. Okay, turning to policies. At stage one, at the last meeting, we started reading 7160, Assignment of Students to Elementary Schools. Since then, we have asked council to look at the policy yet again, and we have really streamlined it, hopefully, and made it much more clear to be reflective of Mr. Gavin in terms of the process, the way he outlined at our last meeting. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to the board, any comments or questions on policy 7160? on policy 7160?
I think that this is just a good example of policies or signs of the time, and I think that when it was revised in '15 and '17, it reflected a philosophy of the district of trying to move resources from building to building to try to hopefully balance. And we saw the repercussions, that that actually had unintended consequences. And I think from just the conversations we've had with Mr. Gavin so far here in public, we understand the philosophy has shifted. We're trying to keep people in their home zone schools, essentially, just trying to reflect that now in writing with the policy. So, I appreciate that we kept it at stage one and kind of rethought it, because I think it was trying to capture too many things from what it had been and not really what you intended it to be going forward.
And I think one of the things that happened is that we were all able to work together to add to different little pieces here, and the questions from the board has prompted a better policy.
Thank you. Thank you for working on it.
I just had a question from, I think it was an open question from last time, with regard to the appeals process and the language being inserted into the policy. It indicates that if the parent or guardian disagrees with the decision, there can be an appeal to the Board of Ed, but yet the process is not listed in there about what they need to do in order to have the appeal. And I think there was also a concern in terms of appeals generally, that there be a codification or a similar statement with regard to what the appeals process is, so that everyone in all these situations gets equal treatment and there's a process that's the same for everyone.
So, Mary, do you want to talk?
So, with regard to the appeal process, it's in the third to last bullet, where if a family disagrees with the determination of the superintendent of schools, they would have to appeal the decision in writing to the Board of Education. They have 30 calendar days of the determination. During that period of time, the family would stay in their home zone school, and then if there is, if the appeal is sustained, then we would, they would move at that time. With regard to appeals, the traditional way appeals would work would be the superintendent makes a determination. If there's an appeal, the appeal would go to the full Board of Education, and then if there is a further appeal, it would go to the Commissioner of Education. There's few exceptions, that it would go directly from the superintendent to the commissioner, but I wouldn't recommend this being one of those.
Just a point of clarification, when the appeal goes from the superintendent, let's say the parent or guardian wants to appeal to the board, that would be in writing?
Yes.
And the response would be in writing as well, correct?
Yes, and that is indicated in the policy, that it would be in writing.
Thank you.
Again, traditionally, same thing with, you know, kind of across the board. Appeals are usually in writing. Usually, you do not have the person who's making an appeal come in and meet with the board in exec session. So, all appeals would be in writing, and then you would give the response in writing.
Right, but the fact that it is, it then goes to the full Board of Education for their decision, I think there's been some differences in how things have been handled in the past. So, if it's in the policy, then everyone knows how it's done.
Yep. I can't speak to what happened in the past, or at least much before, about a year and a half ago. But our recommendation from the office is that an appeal should never go too short of the entire board. Now, there could be circumstances that someone is involved in some way, they have to recuse themselves, but that still is to the whole board, that person would just recuse themselves. You know, in the position, if it was a situation where, say, there's three people who have to recuse themselves, basically by default means, well, it can't be heard by the board and it would go right to the Commissioner of Education.
Right.
But I think, just going back to-
It would go to the board, it would go to the board to then say, oh wait, say this, three of three are, have to recuse yourself, and then we'd write and say, you know, due to the fact that three board members needed to recuse themselves, we were unable to act, because the Board of Education cannot act with less than three people.
I think it's, it needs to be clarified though, that the decision of the superintendent must be appealable by the person to be appealed, because I think there's confusion over this zoning and general appeals. Sometimes people want to appeal the hiring of somebody, the firing of somebody or the disciplines, they legally cannot appeal-
Yeah, they don't have it.
-those things. So, that's not an actual appeal. This is a zoning appeal, would be the superintendent's decision, and this is the way that they can do that.
Yes.
If there's conversation about general appeals, it has to be specific about what the person's trying to appeal and how that process would work, which is separate from this.
Correct. So, things like discipline, there's an appeal, there's a decision, and there's an appeal to the board, and then appeal to the commissioner. Residency determinations, that's one of them, it's a little bit different, it goes right from the district level to the commissioner, there's not the stop at the Board of Education. But most things, again, if it's something that there's power to appeal, then that would go through this, that stage.
It just needs to be clear that it's to the full board, that's the process.
Yeah, it's the Board of Education. Whenever a policy says it's the Board of Education, it's the entire board. There is no separate committee unless you create a committee, but it's to the whole Board of Ed.
Anyone else? Okay, to move this to stage two?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. At stage two, we have 8450, Home Tutoring, Home Hospital or Institutional Instruction. Any comments or questions on 8450? Okay to move this to stage three?
Yes.
At stage three, we have 7522, Concussion Management. Any comments or questions on 7522? Okay to move this for approval at the next meeting? Thank you. Opportunity for superintendent, Mr. Gavin.
Thank you, Madam President. We have had an extraordinarily busy two weeks since our last meeting, and I'd like to highlight some of the many events and successes experienced by the children and teachers here at the Rockville Center Schools. First and foremost, I am thankful to Dr. Walsh, Mr. Moss, and the entire Southside High School Business Department for organizing an informational meeting about our high school business program. The course offerings, the potential to earn college credit, and an opportunity to study a subject with real and immediate connection to the real world were highlighted to not only some of our parents and future students, including many eighth graders, but also, I would wish to note such a positive partnership with the Rockville Center Chamber of Commerce, who sent many representatives to come hear about our program and think about different ways that our students can work with local businesses. Particularly, I'd like to thank Lisa from Polka Dot Pound Cake and Douglas Ellman Donna O'Reilly, who were enthusiastic participants and representatives of the many local businesses here, and they are so interested and impressed with our students. The presentation started with our teachers and Mr. Moss, but really the true stars were the students, where they talked about how they integrate their experiences, not only in the classroom, but in clubs like DECA, and their excitement for future offerings next year, such as the virtual enterprise class. It really was a warm and positive way to really highlight an outstanding opportunity and program that we have here at Southside High School. As we're talking about this, I also want to wish best wishes to all of our DECA club members, as they compete at the state level competition in Rochester. Our Southside High School sent over 60 club members to compete, and if you follow them on Twitter, you can definitely hear that they seem to be pretty confident about how they're doing in this competition. Not guaranteeing anything, but I can tell you that if you follow the DECA Twitter, you can see that they seem like they're pretty positive. So, game on, let's go. Our swimming and diving team, I want to congratulate the members of our boys varsity swimming and diving team for finishing 15th overall in New York State. That is super impressive. Senior Nick Rhodes was the state champion in the 100-meter backstroke with, excuse me, 100-yard backstroke with an automatic All-American qualifying time of 48.97. That is smoking. Great job. The medley relay of Nick Rhodes, David and Ramel Farangash and Danielle Walter finished in 12th place overall in the state, congratulations to them. Our senior diver, Thomas McCarthy, finished ninth in the dive event, and senior Ramel Farangash placed 12th in the 100-meter breaststroke. Our 400-meter freestyle relay of Ramel, Danielle, David Farangash, and Nicholas Rhodes finished 26th to conclude the meet. So, we showed very, very well at New York State Swimming and Diving Competition, congratulations to all. I also wish to congratulate our winter track team as well. We had two athletes qualify for states. Claire Bohan finished 26th in the 3,000-meter run, I just feel tired and exhausted thinking about that. And John Frazier finished ninth overall in the triple jump. Well done, and congratulations to both. And, in big news this weekend, our boys varsity basketball team is Nassau County Champion. You can clap, feel free, feel free. Congratulations to the entire team and our coaching staff for our first county championship since 2011, 2012. The team plays in the Long Island Championship this Saturday at Stony Brook versus Kings Park. Game on, RVC. Just so no one thinks that we are all about just business and just sports, I do want to recognize the tremendous accomplishments of our co-valedictorians, Cameron Coletti and Samantha Stein, and our own National Merit Scholar, Matthew Downing. They are all shining examples of how hard work and dedication to learning can lead to outstanding achievements. They have made Southside and RVC super proud. Finally, Southside High School held its 117th Red and Blue Extravaganza. It was my first time experiencing it. We had almost 400 young ladies working at a feverish pace during the month of February to prepare for three intense days of competition, collaboration, and overall joy. I went to Thursday night's opening event and was blown away by the coordination, intricacy, and collaborative effort of our high school students. The dances, skits, songs, and sports were a unifying village effort. A deep, deep thank you goes to the parents for their work to create unbelievable costumes. Lawn signs, our directors and advisors for their super enthusiastic support of this time-honored tradition, and of course, the ladies took our breath away yet again. They were really unbelievable, their talent, their creativity, and hard work is so impressive to view, and more importantly, despite what side they're on and who won throughout the entire event, I saw examples of mutual support and cooperation. I can't wait till next year. Who what? Red.
Red.
So, that is my superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Opportunity for board members, Mrs. Messier?
I'd like to start by thanking Mr. Murphy and Mr. Bartels for their presentations tonight. Both were very informative. Good luck to our DECA team as they participate in the state championships. Congratulations to the boys basketball team on your county championship. Good luck this weekend at the Long Island Championships. I would also like to congratulate the members of our winter track and field team, as well as the swimming and diving team, for their outstanding performances at their county-state qualifying and state meets. You make Rockville Center very proud. Thank you to everyone in our school community who helped to coordinate and facilitate Red and Blue this past weekend, to all of our students who participated, amazing job, you are absolutely spectacular. Finally, I appreciate the update on the region's review classes. As I have expressed, I disagree with offering two separate classes and with requiring payment for one course, which is surely the more robust of the two. This was an issue that we had three years ago, and I'm sad to see that it's an issue again. Thank you.
Mrs. Farisani?
March being Women's History Month, I want to thank my fellow board members, all of whom are women, for your service to our community. And while my hearing has not yet been fully restored, I want to thank all the women who made this year's Red and Blue review possible. The tremendous effort expended by the advisors, directors, captains, coordinators, team members, and of course, the sewing moms, grandmas, aunts, and friends, was evident in the level of artwork, music, dancing, singing, athleticism, spirit, sportsmanship, and costume creations. Congratulations to the red team on their victory, but perhaps winning is being happy and working hard with all of your old friends while making new ones, acting as a team, participating in a tradition that is 107 years old, and having a few weeks just to be a kid with other kids. The lessons in organization, determination, time management, and coping skills when things may not be going your way are invaluable. Both teams learned these things and more. It is a true testament to what women can do when they support each other in collaboration towards a common goal, so bravo ladies. We can't forget our talented Red and Blue boys and all the dads and relatives that helped make this a success as well, so thank you to them. Good luck to our Southside High School DECA participants competing in states in Rochester this week, and congratulations to all of our sports teams, and good luck to the boys this weekend.
Thank you. Mrs. Hackett?
Nothing says dedication to your school district more than spending your birthdays at a board meeting, so I just want to publicly say happy birthday to Dr. Moriarty and Dr. Downing. Happy birthday, and you've both been such great additions to our team this year, and we're both, we're all so grateful for all of your knowledge, your wisdom, your kindness. But again, spending it with us, we owe you a night, so thank you. And you did know the schedule too, she didn't even argue.
We did have a cake.
We did, we didn't get to eat it, but Mrs. Barry brought a beautiful cake for them. So, hopefully guys, cut it in half, split it, take it home, enjoy it later with your families, but thank you for being here. Yes, yesterday was International Women's Day, and it was a wonderful week to be a woman in Rockville Center, just getting to celebrate this 107th year tradition. I want to also thank Mrs. Rossetto, our directors, advisors, captains, judges, camera crew, the photographer, Mrs. Ebel, our custodians, the parents, and of course, our young ladies who were just, made us all so proud. This is one of those examples where if you couldn't be there in person, you could still be part of it, and I appreciated that we bring it out to people. I admit, I was a terrible confirmation guest. I watched the boys' basketball game and Red and Blue on Saturday at somebody's house at a confirmation, but it was, it was an exciting time and there were, everybody was kind of on board to support our students, so it was fun. So, in addition to our Red and Blue and everything that happened, I just want to say congratulations to our high school boys varsity team who won the Nassau County Championship. I'm looking forward to cheering you on this weekend for the Long Island Champs. And congratulations to our swimmers, our track stars, our DECA students who are up in Rochester. I also wanted to say congratulations to our co-valedictorians, I'm so proud of them, I can't wait to hear their speeches at graduation, our merit finalists as well. I also would like to just make a plug for the Rockville Center Ed Foundation, it's perfect timing, it's floating above Mr. Gavin. It's a beautiful event, the students, yeah, it is. I keep looking over, and I think you think I'm looking at you, but I'm actually looking at this beautiful Gatsby, I'm excited to go. We've been going every year as board members and supporting it, and it really is a wonderful event. It does support our students directly. If you walk around this district, we could take you on a tour of all of the things that they've supplied to our children, to our buildings, the programs, the professional developments, the artists in residence, the writers in residence, people who come here and interact with our students. So, we're really so appreciative of all the work of the Ed Foundation. I wanted to thank Mr. Gavin for continuing a tradition that we also have in Rockville Center on a board for having our legislators meeting that Christine and I were able to attend this week. We had just a really long agenda that we were able to move through quickly and collaboratively, and I really appreciated all the work that Mr. Gavin and his team went into, where we had the full administration in attendance with us, and many if not all of our local representatives were here, some of whom might be being rezoned from us, but still took an interest to come here. And it was just such a beautiful example of how we could work together and how we all brought things to the table. In fact, some of the legislators were bringing things to us and asking us how we were handling things, and I appreciated that as well. It wasn't all directed at them, but also interactive from them. We talked about funding for UPK and cybersecurity, property tax assessments, capital work, the housing issue. But again, thank you to all of our legislators and our administration for hosting that. So, we hope that this last week of Rockville Center is how we go forward. We've had a really good time, proud time to live here, so thanks for all the work that everybody's doing, and again, happy birthday to our lovely ladies.
Thank you. Dr. Downing?
Thank you. Thank you to our cabinet members who presented various topics for our information tonight. Food allergies and student safety are always our top priority. Thank you to Mr. Bartels for making this most recent breakout session of the different components of the budget understandable and good food for thought and discussion. Thank you to Mr. Murphy for explaining the new opportunities for our students to earn a seal of civic readiness, to put that civics education out from the classrooms into our community. And congratulations to all of our athletes on their amazing achievements and success, swimming, diving, track, basketball. I loved attending the final night of Red and Blue to see the amazing work by all of those involved. Congratulations to everyone who participated for your dedication and for sharing your talents with us. And thanks, of course, to the Army who worked behind the scenes, from the advisors, to the staff, to the video club, for all your hard work. It really, last Saturday, was a thrilling, very busy night. Many of us made the drive from Hofstra, from the boys' basketball game, over to Red and Blue, and it highlights all the great things that we have to celebrate. So, good luck to the team against Kings Park, know that we're all rooting for you and we're really proud of you. I also attended the informational night hosted by the business department, and then again, last night, there was another evening hosted by the high school music department, and as men- And as mentioned, the business night featured a panel of current students and alumni who discussed how their business class electives and their extracurricular activities work hand in hand and prepare them both for the next phase of their studies and for future jobs. So good luck to DECA. Thank you to Mr. English, Mr. Moss, Dr. Walsh for all of the information presented, and as mentioned, Mr. English is one of the honorees at the Ed Foundation Gala, so I'm looking forward to that. Music night had a great turnout last night, as Dr. Fryling, Ms. Mark, and Ms. Ying explained options for students who might be interested in majoring in music or a music-related field from music education to business to performance, and how to go about potentially auditioning for those performance arts as part of a college applications process. So I think both of those presentations, business and music, help us as parents, and they help our students understand how and why what we learn in school is relevant to life outside, and I think they also help to demystify what happens within the walls of Southside High School, and it's really so important to listen to our students who are so engaged and so well-spoken about their experiences and their plans for the future. On that note of music, good luck to all of our all-district performers who will be sharing their talents with us at the all-district concerts next week and the week after. Orchestra, March 14th, all-district band, March 16th, and chorus, March 20th. I'm very excited to hear about the next parent university, which is going to be focusing on the K-5 experience. So many great workshops offered, from literacy to math to coding to differentiated instruction. I encourage all elementary school parents to come out and attend a workshop or two on March 21st. As other board members have said, it's important for our community to understand how civics and identifying problems in our community go hand in hand with what we do here on the Board of Education, and the village has provided a template in terms of contacting your legislators if you are interested as a citizen and a taxpayer of our town, and if you go on rvcny.gov, you can see information sheets, as President Barry mentioned. Lastly, the Your Schools newsletter was emailed out on Monday, so check your inbox, and this was a great publication. Thank you so much to everyone involved who assembled all the photos and the designing of that. Thank you.
It's hard to go last. Great job to all of those involved in Red and Blue. Both teams should be proud for their efforts that were put forth, and I thank everyone that was involved behind the scenes as well. To all of our students at DECA, I agree, we attended, I also attended the business informational night, and Mr. Gavin, thank you, I know that was intentional on your part, as well as Dr. Walsh, for bringing members of the Chamber of Commerce in and making that connection, as well as our alumni, and our student speakers were amazing that night, and I hopefully we can continue having those presentations moving forward and grow them even more, so thank you. Good luck to them upstate. Congratulations to our swimming, diving, and track students as well. You certainly have made us all proud, as everyone has said already. Best of luck to our boys out at Stony Brook. I will be there on Saturday cheering you on. I would also like to echo Mr. Gavin and Mrs. Hackett and Dr. Downing about the Ed Foundation Gala. I will be there on April 1st as well, and we are very appreciative of all of your support. Lastly, congratulations to Cameron, Samantha, and Matthew. We're looking forward to honoring you at our next meeting. Opportunity for visitors. The public in its comments is requested to refrain from making any direct references to students or staff members that could be considered critical of their performance or their character. Such references to individual students or staff members are inappropriate in a public forum and should instead be conducted in private conversation with appropriate members of the staff. Please state your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes.
Jeff Greenfield, Citizen Taxpayer, Yuba Court. Mr. Bartels, I read in the paper, I'm glad you covered it today, that I'm delighted to hear that you're using, I wasn't sure I read it right, surplus fund balance to fund two capital projects rather than bonding and further burdening the taxpayers with debt service. However, in Limbrook, they take money out of reserves. They require a referendum on a vote at the budget time. Is that not necessary this time?
This is coming from undesignated fund balance.
I think you're right. That's the difference. Thank you. Landtech, great vendor, great track record, world-class, best-in-class, but if you get them under the county contract, it's less. That's what Limbrook did, so please investigate that. Roofers, very difficult class with insurance. Make sure you have a good insurance certificate with all the coverages for labor law, and there's a lot of roofers with a lot of bad insurance certificates out there. I just tried, we spent four months trying to get a roofer for the temple that had a decent certificate, so, and if you want me to help review it, no charge. I will be happy to do that.
Thank you, Jeff.
Empire Plan Health Insurance, how bad are they whacking us this year with an increase?
They're double-digit increases for January, this January 2023, 15% on regular employees and 22% on retirees.
So, you know, I complain elsewhere. I've had a running discussion with our state controller, my longtime friend, Tom DiNapoli, how we give out to the Empire Plan United Health a $2 billion no-bid contract, and there are other insurance companies in America that can do this, and competition is healthy, and I would encourage the school board through the school board associations now hearing a double-digit increase to raise that issue at your school board associations, because it's outrageous.
I'm also meeting with Senator Thomas next week. I will raise that as well.
Yeah, and the answer, that the controller says it has to come from the governor's office. I'd rather have the governor work on this than the housing compact. My planning commission today at Nassau County passed a resolution with respect to our concerns on the housing complex, and we'll be publicizing that.
We're almost out three minutes.
I'm almost done. Cybersecurity insurance is very important. Don't disclose how much you have, but whatever you have, it's not enough. Double it. Debt service, my favorite question every year, I don't know if I'll be at the budget because of travel schedule, do we have debt service running off this year and will save money?
No, we had quite a bit drop off, almost $2 million over the last couple of years, nothing more for next year. We don't have another debt service dropping off until '27, '28.
Thank you. Good job on using the reserve.
Thank you.
June Cosgrove, 118 Brower Ave. I'm just here because I was concerned about a segment that was aired on News 12 this morning. I'm sure you're aware, there was a Project Veritas video about a superintendent who's kind of pushing agendas covertly, you know, and basically states that it's happening in every school in Nassau County, whether people are aware of it or not, that there's covert means and measures for hiring certain people to push certain agendas, because parents would not be in support of them if they were done openly. So I just wanted to know what our district's response and statement on that would be.
Well, I am aware of, I haven't seen the whole video, but I am aware that it was aired on News 12. It's my understanding that it's an assistant superintendent from another district.
Yeah.
They don't speak for our practices and policies here in Rockville Center. We are open in how we hire, we are open in our curriculum, and we are open in the way that we instruct kids. We believe that all of our students need to be loved and valued and respected. That is non-negotiable, and that we educate from that basis.
Okay. So you haven't seen the video?
I saw, I saw like, I know it's like eight minutes long. I think I saw about a minute and a half.
Okay, yes, disturbing.
Thank you.
Last December, I asked this administration why the words gender identity are on a lesson plan for 10-year-olds, specifically the fifth-grade maturation program. I didn't get a straight answer, and I'm still in correspondence to get answers. So it was interesting to find out yesterday that an East Meadow assistant superintendent has stated that every school district in Nassau is promoting the political ideology known as DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, which includes gender identity, and is doing so covertly and incrementally to avoid pushback from parents who are, in his words, loud and have conservative values. I would like this school district to answer why someone has put gender identity on a lesson plan for 10-year-olds, and where else this ideology has been embedded in the curriculum, because I do not consent to it, and this district has no business pushing this set of beliefs, any more than it has the right to push religious beliefs in the classroom. Parents are free to teach their kids their beliefs and values, including conservative values. Schools have no authority to indoctrinate children with their own beliefs. Unfortunately, the language used in the district's fifth-grade maturation program webinar for parents shows that gender identity ideology has gained a foothold in this district. Normal terms like boys and girls, or simply males and females, were swapped on a number of occasions for the terms biological females and biological males. Who talks about 10-year-olds to their parents in this way? Presumably, it's to allude to a belief that there are non-biological females and non-biological males. We were also asked to believe that if a child says, "I love my dog," when being asked what they like doing, this is the gender identity part of the program. Why are innocent day-to-day conversations being rebranded as gender identity? This clumsy attempt to push an agenda could not be more obvious. When directly asked in a posted question, "Are you teaching that someone's gender identity can be different from their biological sex?" The answer came back that they were teaching, and I quote, "How you are transcends your gender given at birth." Again, this is another clumsy, obvious attempt to allude to 10-year-olds that there is an alternative to their biological sex. Even the scientific factual term biological sex was replaced by the ideological term gender given at birth. These are obvious incremental steps to pushing an ideology. The maturation program materials were presumably approved by this board, and I would like board members to confirm if they support teaching gender identity ideology in schools, and if so, from what age. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I just want to turn it over to Dr. Moriarty to talk about the fifth-grade maturation program.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. So for everybody who is watching, who may not yet have a fifth grader, this is a fifth-grade lesson that we are speaking about. The information is on every single elementary homepage. The webinar is there as well. Both of the teachers who teach this lesson are willing to meet with any parents who have any concerns, and I always offer an in-person meeting to clarify questions, concerns, and any other comments that they may have, so we can work together as partners. When I refer to the elementary homepages, the goals are clearly outlined, as well as the lesson plans. The goal is to provide an age-appropriate functional knowledge about maturation and deals with the changes that occur beginning around fifth grade. These are biological changes that occur to each and every single one of us as we enter puberty. The New York State Guidance Document is on the New York State website, and when parents call, that is also, or email, that is also sent to them, so they can refer to the New York State Guidance Department's document. And our teachers use that guide and are very skilled and knowledgeable in working with our learners. This is a very complicated maturation process, and they have to be very skilled in being able to negotiate questions that students might bring up, that we cannot anticipate necessarily. And then they have to know who to send the child to if they have any questions, and of course, call the parents and make sure that the parents are involved. Both of the teachers work with our learners in group meetings broken up by how they're born as males and females. The goals are outlined, and they revolve around the learners identifying their likes, their interests, defining their self-esteem, defining what self-esteem is, and ways to improve their self-esteem. They identify their strengths and their favorite things to do as well. These lessons are also on the webpage and are clearly outlined step by step, first, second, next, last. The webinar also goes over this and asks for any questions. The specific standards that we're looking at are FLSE 10, individuals pursue their interests regardless of their gender or their gender stereotypes, and FLSE 11, although males and females are alike and different, in many ways, each individual has unique physical, psychological, and emotional needs. And any child who comes up with something that is not developmentally appropriate for fifth grade is given an opportunity to speak to the appropriate support staff, and that support staff follows the protocol in which they follow to inform the parents of whatever needs to be informed.
Thank you. I think the key thing here is having someone who was a fifth-grade teacher and who has taught the maturation process, this was many years ago, it's biological. We teach what happens biologically with males and what happens biologically with females as they mature. That's really the case of what we do. All of the information is available, as Dr. Moriarty said, on our home web, on our elementary websites, and there is no attempt to indoctrinate any hidden agenda.
Thank you.
William Cooney, 91 Hempstead Avenue. In an interview published yesterday by Project Veritas, an assistant superintendent at another Nassau County school district asks, "Why do we need to sexualize kids at a young age? Why not just let them be?" The answer, it seems, is in the New York State Education Department's entirely subjective definition of gender, which declares that in New York State, gender is identified by the student. In the case of very young transgender students, not yet able to advocate for themselves, gender may be identified by the parent or guardian. The last part of that definition in particular is obviously incorrect. Very young students, not yet able to advocate for themselves, two, three, and four-year-olds, necessarily are also unable to identify as transgender. It is an adult concept, entirely unnecessary and inappropriate to apply to children too young to advocate for themselves. The sexualization of very young children, referred to by that administrator by adults, is thus the direct result of the state's refusal to acknowledge objective reality and employ an objective definition of gender. It is also Education Department policy in this state to promote a relationship of trust and respect between schools and families. When the state education department and local superintendents attempt to implement policy changes that are unacceptable to and undisclosed to the communities they serve, covertly, to use that administrator's word, precisely because they know those policy changes to be unacceptable to the communities they serve, that relationship of trust and respect is broken. In my view, restoring that trust and respect will require new and completely different leadership in our state government, leadership that respects our common goals, our common values, and our common sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gavin, we have an acceptance of a gift.
We want to thank the Riverside School PTA for the gift of their Gaga Pit, and we hope that the board will ratify the $2,000 gift. Thank you very much, Riverside PTA.
Thank you, Riverside. Recreational purposes, yes. Can I have a motion to accept the gift?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again to Riverside PTA.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the receipt of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve items for Action 1 through 6?
So moved. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone. Our next meeting is March 23rd, and that will be a public work session. And, oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Gavin. Just make note that our next meeting, January 20, oh, January, wow, March 23rd.
March 23rd.
We're going back in time. We'll begin, public will begin at 6:00 PM on March 23rd.
6:00 PM on March 23rd.
We'll make sure we blast that out, too.
That's right.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.